I have called the meeting of the Ames zoning board of adjustment to order. It is Wednesday, September 10th, 2025, and is 6:02 PM, 1:00 PM. All right. My name is Leah Patton. I'm the chair of the CPA. I'll read a statement just to let folks kind of know a bit more about our board. The zoning board of adjustment is a quasi judicial board created by the city of Ames. The board's purpose is to decide on applications, special use permits, exceptions and variances to the zoning ordinance, applications for conditional use permits in the floodplain, requests for reasonable accommodation because of a disability, and appeals of decisions of the zoning enforcement officer. As a board of the city, we welcome all testimony. We make our decisions based on the facts and evidence as allowed under city code and presented in open meeting. Testimony before the board must be given under oath or affirmation. If the proceedings become lengthy, we may ask that testimony be focused on new facts or evidence not already presented. We ask that you come to the microphone if you wish to speak so that your testimony will be audible and may be recorded. Before speaking, please fill out an information card. We've got those right outside the door there and hand it to the recording secretary. When you are testifying, please address your remarks to the board. We also add that ask that proceedings be orderly. The zoning board of adjustments is an independent volunteer board of citizens. We are not part of the city administration. We are served in our efforts by Jane Chang, Assistant City Attorney.
Benjamin Campbell.
Benjamin Campbell. And Amelia Shonman, City Planners, as well as Natalie Reichmeyer, Recording Secretary. The order of proceedings for each application will be as follows. So first, an oral statement summarizing the issues and procedural steps will be presented by city staff. Second, testimony and evidence will be presented by the applicant. Third, testimony may be heard from any members of the audience who wish to speak in support of or in opposition to the appeal. Next, the board will give the applicant and the city staff an opportunity to present concluding summaries and arguments. And finally, the board will discuss the issues and evidence and come to a decision. So first item on the agenda for tonight is approval of the minutes from the last meeting, which was on August 27th, 2025. And I would entertain a motion on approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Kayla has moved to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right. And then we've got a second as well. Yeah. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries, so the minutes are approved. For the second item on the agenda is the public hearing on a request for a variance to the eight-foot side yard setback in the RL Residential Low Density Zoning District at 1420 and 1422 Coolidge Drive, specifically parcel number 05-34-400-170. So I just turn it over to city staff to present the opening statements and opening remarks.
Good evening. The applicant is requesting, and this is an aerial from two years ago. The variance to allow an existing covered entryway to remain as is and encroach approximately three and a half feet into the eight-foot side yard setback. The setback at the closest point would be therefore four and a half feet if the variance is granted. And the enclosure was noted as a zoning violation as part of a regular rental inspection. Rentals have to be inspected every so many years to renew the license. You can see in this aerial here, this was taken two years ago, and so only part of the requested existing structure is shown here. There has been since been a smaller addition to the north of the covered entryway on the west side there. The the structure was built in the 1960s and is zoned residential low density zoning district. Only the rental unit, the 1422, is a registered rental. And on this area here, the the main entrance is to 1420 is in the center of the house on the north side there, and the entrance to the rental is on the west side of the structure, or yeah, west side of the house where you can see the covered entryway. The applicant purchased the home in 2000, and the applicant's mother moved into the home several years ago into the rental unit. The rental unit is accessed. It is a split level home, so the entryway on the north side there comes in at the ground level, and then there's a short flight of stairs that goes up and a short flight that goes down. So therefore, to get down to the rental unit there, there's a short flight of stairs, five or six stairs that go up, concrete stairs that go down. And the applicant has submitted some images here, you can see of the structure. As I said, the the encroachment was noticed when during the rental inspection process because permits were not obtained to construct it. The roof projects approximately five feet, four and a half inches from the house to cover the stairs and the depressed landing. The roof is supported, as you can see, by posts that are set just beyond the retaining wall. And the, as you can see there in that middle picture, the applicant then constructed a covered entryway as well around there. That it does project beyond the the front of the house, but it does not encroach into the minimum front setback there. The staff did discuss with the applicant that there are other options for limited encroachments. The the house itself is not right at the eight-foot setback line. It is back, I believe it's two feet or so. And so an additional, or one or two feet, sorry, I'm losing it in my notes. The, there are certain allowances for encroachments to for for eaves and other projections, but that would require the removal of the posts that you can see there that project farthest from the from the structure. So you basically have to tear it down and completely reconstruct it in order to build a cantilevered roof essentially. And then we also do have in our code a minor area modification that does allow for a two-foot encroachment. Neither of these would allow for the exact structure to remain as is, nor would they completely cover the entirety of the stairway as it is. The state recently changed the way that municipalities in Iowa can regulate variances. And a new standard was created that came into effect at the beginning of July for practical difficulties. It's a new standard that is different from the existing variance standard, which requires you to show, among other things, that there is a, that economic value has been deprived essentially from the property. The new criteria applies only to numerical dimensions, including area, and requires that practical difficulties unique to the property at issue and are not self-created as the first criteria. Second criteria, second criteria is to demonstrate that granting the variance won't significantly alter the essential character of the surrounding neighborhood. Third is that the spirit of the ordinance shall be observed even when the variance is granted, and substantial justice shall be done as a result of granting the variance. So I just wanted to go over those in brief since they are, this is the very first case that this board will be reviewing these new criteria. Just to go kind of briefly through the criteria as they apply to this particular property. The the property of 1420, 1422 Coolidge Drive does meet all of the minimum standards for lot area and lot width. The the lot size is over 10,000 square feet. The minimum is 6,000. The minimum lot width is at the building line is 50 feet wide, and the lot is over 83, 83 feet wide. The lot is mostly flat. There's approximately a four foot, four feet difference that I could tell in our topographic maps between the front and the rear of the lot, which is about 110 feet deep. The applicant states that the variance is needed due to the age of the resident in the rental unit and because of weather-related challenges. The property of 1420 does not have any physical conditions unique to the property the staff could identify. The age of the resident, of the resident of the dwelling and recurring weather are not actually criteria that are allowed for that are unique to the property, which is the standard. And therefore, staff does not find that the the first criteria is met. But the second criteria, that it will not significantly alter the essential character of the surrounding neighborhood. There are other duplexes in the neighborhood, none that have a similar type of covered covering on the side. And therefore, staff concluded that this criteria was also not met. The third is that the spirit of the ordinance should be observed when the variance is granted. Minimum setbacks are a standard feature of zoning ordinances. The the six feet for a single story, eight feet for a two-story, which is what Ames has for most residential districts, goes back decades in our code. Not every zoning code has a similar kind of requirement, you know, a variable height for different, for different numbers of stories or even the same number. I've worked in cities where there are five feet before, but the standard that we have that's adopted by, you know, that by code is the six feet for a single story, two-story for, or eight feet for a two-story. And the zoning ordinance doesn't allow for exceptions based on climate, and therefore staff concluded that the third criteria is not met. And the last criteria for substantial justice being done, the substantial justice part speaks to the requirement that the hardship must be peculiar to the property or that an issue of equity in use exists, and it's something that is unique to the property and not shared by the community. And again, staff did not find any conditions that were unique to the property and age and climate are not considered unique to this particular piece of land. Therefore, staff does recommend alternative one, which is to deny the request.
Are there any questions for the board of staff?
If this was just not a rental, would it be acceptable?
No. That's just how it was caught.
I'm curious about the eight-foot setback. It says the justification for that is air and kind of light. Is it, can you give me any more justification for that or more information about that?
And that is the standard reasoning for cities from coast to coast to have minimum setbacks. Many setbacks are a standard feature of all zoning ordinances, I would say. They vary from jurisdiction to be sure they are discretionary to a certain extent. The, you know, the six feet for a single story, eight feet for a two-story is the way that Ames has chosen to do it, you know, by statute. That's what the people's elected representatives have passed into law. The air and light, you know, again, there, there is an element of discretion there. You know, part of the argument is uniformity as well. This is, you know, how we as a, as a people, as the people of Ames have decided we want our community to look essentially.
And you said that without the added structure, the house currently encroaches on the setback?
No, it does not.
It doesn't?
No. It's several, it is, yeah, the the house itself was built within the setbacks, which were basically the same when it was constructed.
Got it.
Any other questions for staff? And I just wanted to clarify, is this the only house in that area that has one of these kind of structures? Or are there any similar ones that are in the area?
There are other duplexes in the area. Many, the the street just to the south has several on there, but I I could not identify any that were similar to this.
Okay. And were they within the setback or not within the setback? The other duplexes?
I didn't measure what their, what the building setbacks were for all of those, but I didn't see any other kind of side entrance, side entrances with with covering, with structure covers.
So there's no, none others, side entrances that's covered like this one in that area?
Not, not that I could identify.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Then any other comments from staff? No? Okay. And then at this time, if the applicant wants to come forward and present any testimony or evidence, applicant can come forward? Is that you, sir?
Yes, sir.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt. Just one other thing. We did receive one letter of of support, and I forgot to bring copies of it. But yeah, that was the only written comment that we received, one in support of granting the variance from a neighbor.
And there wasn't any not in support?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And then, sir, you want to come forward and? And then have you filled out one of those cards?
I have, thank you.
All right, sir. And then can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And then can you state your name and then state where you live, your address?
My name, sorry, I'm kind of soft spoken, so if I need to speak up. My name is Tim Ashley, the current owner, resident of 1420 Coolidge. I'm sorry, what else?
Oh, just your name and where you live.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
You got it. You're good. So yeah, so you can tell us what you want us to know about your request.
Sure. And I prepared, I don't speak very well off the cuff, so I wrote this down, so I hope it's okay to to read some of this. But I do want to address a couple of things and ask Mr. Campbell, if I can do that. The other duplexes in the area, were those entrances below ground or were they all above ground? Did you notice any that were below ground?
I think they were all pretty much at ground level.
At ground level? So no stairs? What else did I? Oh, and then Mr. Whitehouse had asked a question. The house doesn't encroach the setback, but the landing area that currently exists there, the four-foot landing, that does encroach the setback.
The the depressed stairs do, yes, but that's not considered a structure, so it's not the stairs themselves that that go down to the entrance. I wouldn't say, they are within the setback, but they do not encroach into the setback because they would not be subject to the setback.
But they encroach within the eight-foot normal setback for structures. If it was considered a structure, it would be considered encroaching?
The stairs themselves, the concrete stairs that go down are not a structure, but they are within the setback, but it is not an encroachment.
Okay. I didn't know if that's what your question was or not, but I wanted that to be clear that the stairs already, all I'm doing is putting a covered structure over the top of something that's already there with the railing. Okay. Sorry. So I'll just read, I guess, what I have here, and I appreciate your time. First, I want to address the non-code issue. As Mr. Campbell points out, we purchased the home in 2020 and have always had a renter in this apartment. We've never attempted or contemplated a covering for this in the past, and we've never done that. Only when we moved my mother into the apartment was the safety issue acknowledged in that first winter, when it was extremely difficult to keep it safe for her to go up and down those stairs. My wife and I both have full-time jobs, so we are not always there. She does travel back and forth to Mary Greeley or doctors, chiropractors, so we can't always be there during the day. So if it's snowing or sleeting, that that's my main concern. So I understand the points that Mr. Campbell is making in assessing the very high-level nature to the setback code in relation to the general nature of this situation. I'm asking the zoning board to consider this on an individual basis and not as a general precedent-setting nature. The tenant, the tenant is a, is my mother, parent of the homeowner, and desires to live in this apartment. She was moved here from a small western Iowa community that provided little access to medical facilities, doctors, dentists, chiropractors. She had to travel in excess of 30 miles, basically to Sioux City, this is western Iowa, to receive her medical care. When the apartment came open, that was her desire to live here. Ames offered her the ability to live with family and to be close to medical facilities. She is also on fixed income of social security and IFRS and therefore desires to remain out of costly care facilities or independent living homes, which could be in jeopardy if we cannot keep this safe for her. My point is that while Iowa weather, age, and the property itself are not unique, as pointed out in the assessment by Mr. Campbell, the combination of factors here for this particular individual in my mind does make this unique. In order for her to be likely able to maintain her residence at this location and given the only access to this apartment is the side entryway, it becomes a requirement to maintain a safe, dry entryway at all times. And I do recognize and acknowledge that the building code, I didn't get a permit for this. I'm from a small town. I don't always, you know, I didn't realize that building code was was needed, but when it was first noticed during the inspection, I immediately applied for the building permit and of course, the building permit individual. Then that, and that's how the whole setback issue came into into play. So, so I am completely willing and would expect if this is approved, I would do go through the building code inspection and bring it up to code if there are code issues with it. That's not, that's not a concern. It becomes, yes. And in the, so I acknowledge that the building code should have been done, but I will say in the last three years, it has kept that landing and that little piece in the front was added so that she didn't have to go from snow and ice right onto a step. There would be a little bit of an area there where she could get in through the door and still have enough room to maneuver herself around to get down those stairs. So in essence, the request is being made in much the same way as a work accommodation is being made to address ADA, which requires employers to provide reasonable accommodations to employees with disabilities. These sometimes include making necessary modifications to work environment to ensure accessibility and the ability to perform essential job modifications. In this case, I am making a medical modification for the sole purpose of providing a safe entryway for an individual that is currently at high risk for falling. And I will guarantee that if there's snow and ice on there, she will fall. Again, I want to recognize and I do appreciate the codes that the city has to make properties attractive, airflow, what, you know, all of those. But in this particular case, I guess I'm asking the the board to look past the high-level specifics of this and and to take this into consideration as a unique situation. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right. Any, does any member of the board have questions for the applicant? Oh, yeah, just stay up here, sir.
Sorry. First time.
Have you looked into the temporary cover that was suggested by staff?
So, and I'm sorry, I should have had some water before I came. The awning, Mr. Campbell did share that we could put an awning on there, and the awning can encroach by three feet over the setback.
Correct.
So it pretty much is going to be the same size as what the roof cover is now by about a foot, I think. My concern is an awning is not in the wintertime going to keep snow and ice off of that landing. It sits on the northwest corner of the house, and it drifts shut if we get snow and wind. So while if if I could keep an awning, or if I could build or put an awning on there, that is the max. or if I could build or put an awning on there that is the maximum size, I would do that, but it's not going to keep the snow and ice off of there.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. Can you put the photos back up, please?
Sure. Sorry, I was just showing the, the depths there of the, the dimension of how far it is off.
Yeah, it's not the most attractive thing and certainly, building permit, I would update that. The doorway is, I think, six inches short of being compliant with. So totally understand that. Like I said, building code, I don't have an issue with. But the awning wouldn't, I, I mean, the awning would be fine. It just wouldn't prevent the, the snow and ice from accumulating during the day.
Is it attached to the house?
This structure? There's a little bit of, I don't understand it. It is not attached to the house. It, it butts up against the house, but it is freestanding. So. And that was intended because we are, we have recently re-roofed and put new soffits, new gutters on the house. The next is the siding. I didn't want something attached to the house when the siding project is done. So we would take that down during re-siding. So the sides, so just to explain a little bit more here. So the sides I've kind of constructed so that I can take them down in the summertime. So there is airflow through there and that it's not. But those are covered up during the wintertime. So if there was a question on why the sides aren't. So I cover the sides up during the wintertime and then take them down in the springtime when I know there's no snow or inclement weather.
And how, how tall is it from the ground at its highest?
So I'm six feet tall. It's probably, oh, yeah.
There you go.
I think it's five feet and I don't know that the pitch is necessarily, it was never intended to be permanent. And, and I know we get into, it was never intended to be a permanent structure. I'm taking this down as soon as, sorry, mom. As, as soon as either my mom passes or if she has to move. It will be taken down. So in my mind, it's a temporary, but I also understand by city code, it has to be considered a temporary, a permanent structure. But my intention is to take it down after this resident leaves.
So then, since it's roughly six feet tall, how, how close is it to the property line at its closest?
At its closest?
I think, I think Ben said this, but I can't remember.
At five, at the, in the lower right corner there, which would be the northwest. This is, north is at the bottom in this drawing here. This is like you're facing the, this is like we're facing the house, basically. It's about five feet. Okay, that's what he's got labeled there.
Yeah, right there at the bottom.
Yep. And the, the lot is slightly tapered, so that's why at the top there, you can see it's about six feet.
Oh, yeah.
Gets farther away.
I think you have the dimensions, but the back property line is 110 feet and the front.
Yeah, it's about 110 feet deep from the front to the back.
And then, sir, just to be clear, you're asking for a variance, not a reasonable accommodation. Is that right? You've applied for a variance, is that right?
Yes, I applied for the variance.
Okay.
And I do understand, Mr. Campbell did give me the option of doing the minor area modification. But again, I, I guess I was willing to go this route first because if I did that, I would have to deconstruct this whole thing and construct a new structure that doesn't, oops, that doesn't quite cover that, that landing area. So I think he, he should, he shared with me that that would be the easier route to go or the more likely route to go, I think. But in the interest of keeping the entire structure covered, I wanted to apply for the variance first.
All right, any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question for the staff. I don't know if that's okay.
Closely. Well, no, we, we'd have to go to public hearings.
No, you go back to staff, don't we?
Yeah, I mean, I could skip back up if you've got a question for staff. Do you have one?
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah, we'll go out of order then.
I was curious about the letter of support, whom it might have come from or at least what address.
I, I can go grab it in my office if you want. I'm sorry, I just didn't bring it with me. I printed them out to give you all one and then didn't do it.
Yeah, I was curious, well, one, if it was the neighbor to the west, if that's looking north.
It, it was not that neighbor. I know it was someone in the neighborhood. It was not that specific address. If, if you would like, yeah, you may.
He was, he lives across the street. He's also an elderly individual. And I, and he shared with me, he actually came across and shared with me that he had done that. And basically, I don't know if you remember, he said that the back, can I approach the, the back?
You may.
The water runoff is on the property line. So when heavy rains, that actually is a. He pointed out that doesn't obstruct any light, any water runoff. It doesn't obstruct anything. So that was one thing. I don't know what else he put in the letter, but he did share with me that he, he did point that. If that's a question of runoff from the back. Because it does, like Mr. Campbell said, it, it about a four-foot drop from the back property line to the front. So there is significant water runoff.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right. And thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you.
All right. And then if there are any members of the audience in the pub, any members of the public who want to speak in support of or opposition to the appeal, those folks can come up at this time. Is there anyone who's here today who wants to make a statement in support or opposition to the appeal? All right, ma'am, have you filled out one of the cards?
I have not. I can do it right now if that's.
Yeah, just make sure you fill out one of those.
Do I need to fill out all of it before I can speak? I hate to take your time. Okay.
No, just, just kind of the, your name and apartment information. And if you want to hand that to the recordings secretary. All right, ma'am, can you raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And then can you state your name and then your address as well?
Sure. My legal name is Terry Ashley. I go by Tess. And I live at 1420 Coolidge.
And then what do you want us to know?
First, I wanted to make sure, as you were typing the record, I think in my husband's nerves, he said we bought the property in 2020, but it was actually 2000. And then, I don't know if you're able to put that picture back up? He's quite the carpenter. I, this isn't a, an eyesore in our neighborhood. This is actually a really pretty structure that he's built because he loves his mama. But if you can see on the far right picture, you can see there's a fence. I don't know if you can, you can't tell how tall it is, but it's fairly tall. And I thought in terms of Mr. McDaniel, what you were talking about, the air and all of that. So we do make accommodations, like he said, to take down the boards. The boards that he puts up are flush with those boards that you can see in the first picture. But we take them down when basically it's down from April to October because in Iowa, we can expect snow and sleet anytime between October and April. But that fence is there as well. And so I was just wanting to point out that there's already a fence in place that might impede any kind of air and light issue. And that hasn't been a problem for the city. And so also the other thought I had was that my mother-in-law is elderly in, in so much she is a danger for falling even with the snow and the ice on the sidewalk. You can appreciate that. So she walks with a walker. But it's the cement stairs that are the biggest risk for fall, as you can appreciate. And so the, and there's a railing. Almost took a video so you could see how gingerly, even in the best of weather, she has to walk down those stairs. And my husband and I both worked with special needs for years at Camp Sunnyside. So we've seen the results of people who fall. And I think you're probably all aware that once somebody in their 80s falls, it can really dramatically decrease their lifespan. So I just want you to take that into account.
All right. And then do any members of the board have questions? No. All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right. And then? Oh, is there any other member of the public who wants to speak in support or opposition of the appeal? All right, no one else has indicated that they want to. So we'll move on and give the city staff an opportunity to present any closing summaries and argument at this time.
Yeah. Excuse me. I know this is a, a new process for the practical difficulties variance. I do, I do just want to stress that the criteria that we have are the ones that come to us by, by state statute. And if you, you know, the zoning, to, to a large extent, is discretionary. If you, if you think something should change, you're welcome to recommend that the council change. Any member of the public is allowed to request a text amendment to something, whether it's to create a different exception process or to, you know, change a standard outright. But the, the, the question before the board tonight is, are these four criteria and whether or not the request meets these four criteria?
Are there, is there any guidance that were given in terms of what those terms mean?
There is, well, as far as the, I mean, there's case law on some of them. Some of the criteria are also, the, the last two, I believe, are exactly the same as in the, the existing, the, the longstanding variance criteria. The, the first one is, is new to this process for practical difficulties. And then the second one is kind of a modification of, of a previous one. As I mentioned before, the for substantial justice, for instance, for the last one, that's related to the requirement that a hardship be, be proved for, you know, or be, be shown to exist for the property. Or if there's an issue of equity that, again, related to the use of the property itself exists for the spirit of the ordinance, I would say, what is the ordinance trying to accomplish? So the, you know, setbacks are a standard feature of zoning ordinances. And this, this is a request to deviate from those, from that standard requirement. I think that the essential character, you know, what I was trying to get at with, with saying that there are, I couldn't identify any similar types of structures over covered stairs within the neighborhood. You know, is that, the, the neighborhood, most of the neighborhood was built in the, the 60s, roughly 60s, maybe some homes in the 70s. And that might get at architecture or, or other elements of the building itself. And then as far as the first one with the practical difficulties, you know, again, it stresses that the, the criteria is that it's unique to the property and not in a hardship that is self-created. So it's something about the land itself. So like a, a classic example would be if there's, you know, wacky topography or something like that, that makes it such that complying with the setbacks would leave you a very small bit of land. Or I've worked in a city previously that had very stringent requirements about tree preservation. And so say if there were a tree in the middle of a lot, that might, you know, when combined with the setbacks, might make it very difficult, might leave you a very small piece of the property that you could develop. That might be another example of something that's unique to the property as well.
All right. And then does the applicant wish to present any concluding summary or argument? All right, you can come back up here, sir.
Thank you. And again, I appreciate all that and I understand why the code is there and why it's applied. But in this particular case, just to finish up on my thought with the awning, where I wanted to go with that was outside the awning, I have essentially, based on the setback rule, I have no way to keep this covered and to keep it safe. And I've asked for options to do that and there are none. Awning and then this minor, minor area modification, which is going to do pretty much the same thing. I just need to take about a foot off the front of this. So I don't understand. I understand the intent of state law and all that. But in this particular case, I'm going straight up off of, or pretty much straight up off of a, a landing area. And if I get the minor area modification, all I have to do is take about a foot, foot and a half off of this and I have the same thing. I'm just asking for that extra foot. And again, without any reasonable ways to cover that, I cannot keep this a safe landing area for this individual. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, the board will next discuss the issues and evidence and come to a decision. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So you asked about the purposes of setbacks. I, my interpretation of the airflow and the light issue really applies more in an urban context, or much more urban context, where the height of a structure would cast a shadow on, and, you know, put another house in darkness most of the day or prevent the flow of air in, you know, like a downtown setting where smog builds up or something like that. So I think the six-foot or eight-foot setback, setbacks requirements, depending on the height of the structure, are wide enough where that wouldn't be an issue. How I'm kind of looking at this, first off, I don't like asking people to tear down things that are already built. The southern edge of, edge of the structure is six feet away from the fence line because the property, if you, can you go to the map then? Yeah, the southern edge of the structure, I believe he said, was six feet away from the property line and it is a single-story structure. So in that sense, the I am kind of in support of granting the variance because it's, I understand, I think that because the whole building is two stories, they have to meet the eight-foot setback requirements. In my view, because this is a sort of accessory structure, I think it's kind of presents a practical difficulty.
I do just want to say that the, that the entire structure does have to be eight feet back. If it's a two-story structure, that is how, that is how the code has been applied for, you know, time immemorial.
Right. So in, in the requirements of the practical difficulty, the harm has to stem from the, a unique characters, a, a, what's it say? The practical difficulties faced are unique to the property at issue and not self-created. The property line not being square and it being at a diagonal, I think is a, is unique to the property. That's how I'm interpreting it. I'm open to be persuaded. And they consider this a two-story?
Yes, this is two-story.
Yeah.
So it's like, it does, is the house, the house is, so all of it has to, regardless of what you add on.
Julie, could you move a little closer to me?
Oh, I just said that the house is, so then everything that you add on to it has to comply with the same standards because the house is two-story.
But I thought it was split level. Is there a difference between split level and two-story?
It's, it's, it's a two-story structure. This is how staff has interpreted it. I mean, if the, you know, that, that if the, if the council wants to, you know, create a different standard or create a different set- or create a different setback or create different setbacks for, you know, split-level houses like this, they can do this. But that is how staff has been applying this for.
I'm not opposed to where you're going with this. I just, there's a lot of not square, not rectangle properties in town. So I didn't understand it's not, you know, this is a unique to this property request and we're not setting a precedent. I'm just, we, it's likely we could see a situation where this, that reasoning might fit another situation.
Right.
So.
Do we need to see that all four criteria are met? Or is it a majority of them?
I believe it has to be all four of them.
The way it is written, it is that all criteria are met.
Okay. Yeah, I was looking back and it wasn't quite serious. You must prove that and then A, B, C, D.
Yeah.
I mean, sorry, go ahead.
If we don't agree with them, we're going to have to make our own findings because staff said that each of them were not met.
Well, I don't, I have a hard time saying that B is not met. I don't see that this cover significantly alters the character of the neighborhood. I mean.
That's where I was going.
So I've, so like with your reasoning of A, and I think B's met, I just, I personally think it's not.
I thought we had to meet all of them.
Right, I'm just going through them one by one because we have to have a reason if we're going to change it.
Yeah. I, sorry, go, I.
Oh, no.
I feel like I can easily justify B, C, and D being met, in my own mind, you know, and that's just me. A is the one that I think we're having trouble with, just in general, because, you know, we've never done this before. And what I'm having trouble now with A is, is based off of my interpretation of how to measure the setback, is like, where is the harm being imposed if I'm interpreting this structure as meeting the setback requirements, which I don't think is the appropriate interpretation either, but.
But if it's six feet, it's supposed to be eight. So it's already too far, two feet over.
Right.
So what I'm struggling with is that the practical difficulties faced have to be unique to the property and not self-created, so specifically unique to the property?
Well, if you want to take Caleb's thought process a step further, I mean, they didn't build the house. The built was not, the house was not built square on the property with a parallel to the front property line, right? So it's not built parallel to the sidelines, the lot sideline, you know what I mean? Like you could have positioned it originally on the lot in a way that would have fit without being close to setbacks. They didn't build the house. I mean, so if you really want to
Yeah.
take the leap, go down.
To kind of like expand on my interpretation of the characteristic unique to the property, I always, I kind of always figured that most zoning codes assume that every lot is roughly rectangular. And so when we have issues where we have a trapezoidal lot, that's where these issues of side setbacks can come up, where we don't want trapezoidal houses, but we have these like diagonal lot lines.
So as Julie mentioned before, though, we have many property in town that is not on a square lot, including several of the neighbors to this lot.
Right.
And I would say actually, most new lots probably are not rectangular. They tend to be on curving streets and that creates non-rectangular lots. Just one quick thing, the board can always recommend something to council if you see something that should be, you want to recommend a code change, if you want to recommend something about the code that you think should be addressed in a certain way. Whether as a board in your capacity, all five of you, or individually, you can always do that as well.
Ben, can you explain why this is considered a permanent structure and not temporary?
The code doesn't recognize something like a temporary structure. And, you know, we're in the, from a code perspective, that you know, we'll run into complications and difficulties where temporary eventually becomes permanent. It's been there so long and, you know, then the argument becomes, well, it's been there for a while and so why not just let it go? The, and I don't think that our zoning code is different from any other zoning code that recognizes or that requires whatever it is to be, to comply with the setbacks. Now, there are certain, there are a number, we have a whole exceptions section where there are certain, you know, architectural features like the three-foot that we discussed earlier, that can project into setbacks. That includes, you know, things like decks are included in there and chimneys are allowed to project into things like setbacks as well. When anything that has a roof, though, and is covered, then that, that counts as a structure and therefore has to comply with setbacks.
So what's the difference between a structure and an awning then? Because an awning covers and is attached to the ground, some awnings.
The, they could have a three, an awning that projects three feet in. The issue then would be the posts there. Because the posts are then anchored onto the ground. You'd have to attach it to the side of the house and essentially cantilever it out, like you would like an eve or something, or like an awning to a building.
So it's not because it's enclosed? It's because of where the posts are?
Well, the enclosure at the front would also count, yes. But I'm looking, sorry, looking at the older part of it here, that's in the foreground in this picture, the posts would be the issue there that
Oh, I see.
attach. Yeah, you would have to remove the enclosed part as well for the, to comply with the three feet that can.
What's considered enclosed? Like, so I know part of it is to keep aside from it not being an awning, right? But if the purpose is to keep the elements out, what's, if that fence was not, it appears wrought iron, I don't know if it is, but slatted with openings and it was solid but didn't go all the way to the top and all the way to the ground, there's some opening, like at what, what point is it enclosed? Can he, if it could meet setbacks, could he do it all the way to the top except for the top six inches or something?
Fences can be, at that location, could be six feet tall. And it could, but we don't regulate the style of fence, so it could be, you know, chain length wrought iron, it could be cedar foot fence, you could have that there. And then to your question about like, what is the gap? I mean, I would say they would have to be freestanding, for sure. They could be attached to one another.
So a fence.
You could put a fence there.
That doesn't touch the fence.
But then they'd have to, the posts would have to, couldn't touch the roof.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. And the, like I said, the code has a list of exceptions that are allowed to, to various extents, project into setbacks and accessory structures when they're in the rear yard have smaller setbacks as well. And we do also have the minor area modifications. Two feet is the standard that is in the code. The council does occasionally create other minor area modifications. I've worked on one that was created as well. It's not to say that, you know, that, again, there's not like an iron, there's no like law of nature that says that eight feet should be for a two-story setback, but it is what, you know, the people's elected representatives have chosen and, you know, they passed into law as well, the criteria for considering of this practical difficulties variance. So if the code should change, that is a, that's a legislative role, a role for the council.
Any further discussion?
I don't have anything.
And then does anyone, any board member want to make a motion?
This is a tough one for me, but I can move since we're all in deliberation here. But I think the four criteria are really tripping me up. I think there's one that the applicant is just not meeting. And so I move to deny the variant. So alternative one. McDaniel.
All right. McDaniel has made a motion to approve alternative one. Is there a second?
I'll second. White House.
White House has made a second in the motion, and then we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Aye.
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 No.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries in terms of alternative number one, to deny the request for a variance. Any person desiring to appeal this decision to a court of record may do so within 30 days after the filing of this decision. All right, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is item number three, public hearing on a quest for variance to reduce the side setbacks for a two-story home from eight feet to six feet along the south property line and four feet along the north property line at 216 North Hazel, parcel number 09-03-455-160. And then we'll first hear from staff on that request.
Before Ben starts, I wanted to note that I'm going, I intend to recuse, I won't participate in any discussion.
Oh, for this item?
For this item, yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Excuse me. I'm presenting this case on behalf of my colleague, Parker Walsh, who couldn't be here this evening. So I did just want to note as well that the request has changed a little bit from what it initially was. The property here on North Hazel, the, after the, this report, like the last one, was continued from the previous meeting when we didn't have a full board and the applicant modified the request somewhat. The current request is on the north side to have three feet encroachment into the setback, so it would be eight feet, or sorry, five feet. It's an eight-foot setback for a two-story structure on the north side there. And then a two-foot encroachment into the also eight-foot setback. So that would be six feet setback. Just wanted to make that clear. So the applicant of this property is requesting a setback variance for a proposed two-story structure. The property is on North Hazel. There's an alley to the south there. The property is zoned urban core residential medium density. And it allows for the construction of single-family dwellings. The intent of the zoning is to preserve the general single-family character of the area, maintaining the pre-existing mix of housing that has existed prior to 2000, when the current zoning district was established. The owner acquired the property earlier this year. Previously, there was a small, approximately 460-square-foot dwelling that was demolished also this year. And the property is 6,240 square feet. And, which does exceed the minimum requirement of 6,000 square feet. Staff received earlier this year a building permit to construct a two-unit dwelling. The applicant was informed that this would only allow for a single-family structure and the, then resubmitted plans for a single-family dwelling that does comply with zoning. The applicant then decided to increase the size of the dwelling to the present structure, which does exceed the setbacks on the north and the south side. The applicant is constructing to propose a single-family structure that will encroach into both, again, this is one where the setbacks are eight feet on the sides because it is a two-story structure. The request is being made based on the applicant's claim that complying with the setbacks will result in a hardship, although the property is 52 feet wide and 120 feet long. And you can see the dimensions with the proposed footprint there. It does comply with all of the minimum zoning requirements. The minimum lot width is 50 feet wide. The applicant states that the lot is relatively narrow, making it difficult to construct a two-stall garage and a home with adequate living space. Applicant contends that, in the application, that the additional feet on the north and the south will allow for a single family with a reasonable layout to be built. Applicant also states that the existing lot conditions and setback reduce the potential value of the home on the lot. Footprint of the dwelling, if approved, is approximately 2,378 square feet. However, staff does note that this footprint for the house exceeds the residential lots in name to have a maximum building coverage. In this case, it's 35%, which is standard for most of our residential districts. And at 2,378 square feet, that would be approximately 38% of the lot. For the development standards, it does exceed 6,000 square feet, as I mentioned, and the 50-foot width. The front setbacks are 25 feet, which this complies with, and the rear setback is 20 feet. If the variance is not granted, the applicant could choose to construct a two-story, single-family dwelling that does meet the eight-foot side setback requirements. The proposed dwelling would also have to meet the applicable development standards with regards to the building coverage. Again, this is, this request is coming to us also under the new criteria for practical difficulties. The, going back to the standards again. The first one about conditions that are unique to the property and not self-created. Subject property does meet the minimum development requirements for a lot. It is largely flat. It does not have any trees or other encumbrances on it. There is a five-foot electrical easement along the north and the east of the property, but that would be within the, the setbacks would cover that easement. Therefore, staff concluded that the application does not meet the first criteria. The second of the essential, pertaining to the essential character of the surrounding neighborhood. This neighborhood was laid out in the 1890s, and there are a mix of building sizes and building heights within the neighborhood. The purpose of the setbacks is in part to guarantee, you know, uniform or somewhat uniform development pattern and at the size of the proposed building and the reduced setbacks. While there are existing structures that were built prior to the code that do encroach into the setback within the neighborhood, the setbacks and the maximum coverage, building coverage are there to keep the structure itself. are there to keep the structure itself in proportion to the lot, which most of the other buildings in this neighborhood do comply with. And therefore, staff concluded that it does, the request does not meet criteria B. The spirit of the ordinance is the third criteria. As I mentioned, the zoning ordinance with regard to setbacks are intended to provide uniform coverage, air and light. As for, you know, this is a, it's not a suburb, but it is suburban in character here, where you don't have, you know, intense density, as you might in other parts of the city or in other cities. Staff concluded that the proposed request also did not comply with the spirit of the ordinance, criteria C. And for the final one, the substantial justice be done. The staff concluded that with the, although there are a variety of lot sizes within the neighborhood, the code is designed to, again, keep the building in proportion to the lot size. And staff did not find that the last criteria was met either. Therefore, staff does recommend alternative one, which is to deny the variance request.
All right. Any questions from the Board of Staff? For this request?
No.
All right, no questions? All right. And then, at this time, the Board would hear from the applicant, if the applicant's present. All right, you can come forward, sir.
Can I hand this over?
Yes. All right, sir, can you raise your right hand?
Yeah.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
And then, can you please state your name and your address?
Yeah. Adiba Mini, 1018 North Second Street. I have some pictures. What's the best way? Is there a document camera, or should I plug a flash drive into there?
Yeah, we can, we have a document camera.
Yeah.
Yep. You can just hand him.
I can sit over there, actually. Does that work? Because there's a mic over there?
That'd be fine.
Yeah.
Yes.
Looks good. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Good evening. So yeah, I just want to talk through this a little bit. Obviously, this is, you know, everyone's doing this as their first time kind of applying for a variance, and you're first time kind of reviewing them. So I have some pictures here of the lot and the neighborhood. So essentially, this is a relatively small lot. It's basically the smallest the lot can possibly be to be allowable to be built on, right? It's just two feet wider than what would be allowed. And so we wanted to try and build something reasonable here, and that's what I understand the variance process is for. So with new homes, right, it's pretty much unheard of to build a new home with a detached garage. And most new homes have, in the Midwest, they have three-car garages, actually, but two cars considered the minimum. So we take care of my father. He has dementia and is disabled. So he needs to be living on the first floor, which kind of makes the footprint larger, right? So we have to have a room for him and bathrooms, and he has a live-in caregiver. So you have to have another room and so on. So that makes the first four footprint relatively large. Even with that requirement, though, right? So the code says 35%. I think with this variance request, we're at 37%, which to me is a non-issue, right? It's not hurting anybody. It's not doing anything wrong. It's not providing any damage. It's 2% difference. It's within the spirit of the code. So in terms of lot coverage, to me, I guess I don't see any reason why that is seen as an issue. When you compare it to the neighborhood itself, so these are three examples of homes within the neighborhood that have 50% to 60% coverage of the lot. And that's literally three homes next to each other, and there's many others, right? So this is a relatively old neighborhood. Many of the homes cover substantial portions of the lot. Most of the homes do not meet the setback requirements of the code, right? And of course, the code is created by people. It's arbitrary numbers, right? Why is it six feet? Why is it eight feet? It was just decided to be so. I understand that he wants you to follow the code, but I don't, I guess I don't believe that's the purpose of the Board, right? If we wanted to follow the code, someone could just say, no, it's denied because it doesn't follow the code, right? We have the Board to make reasonable decisions, to say that this, you know, this neighborhood has a lot of homes that are older. They're very close together. We're not doing anything close to what they're doing, right? We're very close to the code. But we just want a little bit of flexibility so we can do something reasonable. So essentially, to have a two-car garage, standard dimensions for a two-car garage are 24 feet, 24 by 24, right? And there's a stairway in the house. Once you take into account the width of the walls themselves, that comes out to 30 feet. So the 24 for the garage and about six for the walls and the stairwell. So what's left is six feet, right? So we have this weird hallway, not hallway, six-foot thing going from the front of the house to the back of the house, which is essentially useless. If we add five, six feet onto that, it becomes an 11, 12-foot room. That's actually usable space. That's a living room. That's something we can work with, right? So it's a, in terms of the setback, we're not taking anything from anyone. We're not asking for a whole lot, but what it adds to the property is a lot, right? It's, no one wants to live with a strange six-foot hallway room for the rest of their lives. But reducing the setback is not really hurting anything. We're not encroaching on the easement. There's actually nothing in the electrical easement right now. It's empty. But it exists on paper, and so we're out of the easement. We're not encroaching on that at all. There are no homes even close to the house. The next door, so I have some pictures here. The next door properties. The closest thing is a garage that's 20 feet away, right? So we don't have any issues with airflow. We don't have issues with any of the other things. There's no harm being done, right? So instead of eight-feet setback, we want it to be five-foot setback. The difference in three feet is minor to everybody else, but to the design of the home, obviously, it makes a big difference, like I mentioned, allowing that six-foot hallway thing to actually be usable space. In the staff's report, they actually gave three examples of homes that they said has the same dimension lot, same 52 by 120 dimension lot. And they said that these homes comply, therefore yours should too. I looked up those three homes, and actually, I found that none of them comply with the code. So this is the first one. It's actually very close to the home. It's just across the alleyway from the property. As you can see, the building here is pretty much right on the property line. There's almost no setback for this building here. And of course, the driveway itself coming along the side. The front of the home also encroaches into the front setback. I believe they got a variance for that. And that's just one example, right? So within this first example of one where they said, this lot is the same, you should be able to do that, they've, they show me that it's not possible, right? They encroach on the setback too. Not only that, it has a detached garage, which makes it easier to fit it within the lot, because you can move the garage around from where the home is. It's not adding to the width of the home. On top of that, the assessed value of this home is about $200,000. According to Realtor.com, the average price of a new home, which we're trying to build a new home here, is much, much higher than that, right? So to force new construction to be like old construction is essentially requiring reduced property values, right? And I show here that that would essentially reduce the property value by almost $200,000, which is not reasonable. The second example that they give was 209 Maple. Again, this property has a zero setback for the building in the back there. And you can see on this side here, it goes very close right up to the property line. So none of the examples that they gave of homes meeting the criteria actually meet the criteria. This is another one here, and again, buildings go right up to the property line. And of course, the value of these homes is much less, and they don't even have a two-car attached garage. So within this neighborhood is a relatively old neighborhood. It's not a historic neighborhood, but it's relatively old. And you can see some examples here of homes, many, many homes, that are very close to the property line, because that's how the neighborhood was built. This is a beautiful home here, right on the corner of Lincoln Way and Oak. This is another, it's kind of a large apartment building. As you can see, it covers most of the lot, does not meet the lot coverage requirements. These homes go right up to the property lines. You can see here that they go right up to the alleyways. Many of the buildings are very close to each other, as you can see here. You can, with a lot of these homes, you can reach across and touch both sides at the same time, right? So we're not doing anything like that. There's, with our property, the closest garage is 20 feet away. There's no issue there. But this is typical of this neighborhood, right? We're not requesting anything that's out of character. We're not requesting anything that's unusual, if anything. We're adding value to the neighborhood. We're building something beautiful. All the neighbors that I've spoken to are happy. So what used to be on this lot was a tiny home about the size of a garage, where a significant number of homeless people lived, and there was trash strewn across the yard at all times, constantly complaints coming in from the neighbors about the property. And so that home was so unusable that it was torn down. We've bought the property, and we're trying to build a nice home, bring value to the community, bring value to the neighborhood. Everything about what we're doing, I think, is beneficial to Ames. So we're just asking for your help to make it possible for us to do something reasonable so we can have a reasonable-designed home. It's not abnormally large. I mean, you can see in the neighborhood, there's some three-story homes that are very large. You can see it extends all the way over to here. And like I said, it's typical for homes to have very small setbacks, and we're not as small as them. We're not as small as these homes that go right up to the, you know, right up to the fence or right up to the sidewalk. So I believe what we're requesting is relatively reasonable, and we're just hoping for your help. I understand that he wants you to just apply the code. But then, I mean, a computer could just apply the code, right? And the code is just arbitrary. I'd like to you all to make a reasonable decision based on, you know, people's needs and what benefits the city of Ames, right? Like on the poster there, it says Ames is a forward-thinking community committed to fostering creativity. I would suspect that people who are submitting these variances are doing so for the benefit of the community. And if we were just to apply the code without thinking, we wouldn't need a variance, right? There'd be no reason to have a variance at all.
All right. Any questions aboard for the applicant? I got a question, sir. So is it just the house that's within the setback, the garage? Or is it both of them that are going to be in the setback?
So we don't want to build a detached garage, because that's not standard for new homes. We want it to be attached. And I'll also make it easier for my father, who can't be walking through snow, just like the previous person, to go to a detached garage. But it wouldn't be standard to build a detached, and it would reduce the value of the home significantly. So it's an attached garage, right? So like I mentioned, a two-car garage is 24 feet, considering the walls and the staircase that brings it to 30, and there's only six feet left, right? So six feet is just an oversized hallway that's not useful and reduces the property value. And that's based on the size of the lot. It's purely because it's a 52-foot lot, which is two foot above the minimum allowable, right? Which is all, I mean, all that is even arbitrary, what's allowable and what's not allowable. From a practical perspective, most homes are built on wider lots, and they have more width to play with. And we're not, you know, we're not going right up to the property line like most of the homes in the neighborhood are. We're still five feet away. So it's a very, to me, it's a reasonable request. We're just trying to allow for a reasonable layout in the home.
Any other questions for the Board? All right. Thank you, sir. You can be seated for now.
Okay, if I just sit here?
Just be seated back in the public area, please. All right. Yep, yep. Is there any members of the audience who wish to speak in support of or opposition to the appeal? All right. Nobody's indicating that they want to speak. So now the Board will give the city staff an opportunity to present any closing summaries and arguments.
Yeah. I do just want to point out that the examples that were given for criteria A that the applicant spoke to, they were all pointing out that those three properties met the side setbacks. It was not addressing, because this is a variance request for side setbacks. It was not addressing front setbacks or any other rear setbacks. I would also say that zoning codes are written with the understanding that there will be non-conformities. So every city's got, you know, the codes adapt and they change over time, and the, you know, the understanding that as new development happens, the new development will come into compliance with the code. So, you know, there are plenty of properties in any city that have buildings that, say, encroach into setbacks, and they're allowed to continue. But when those structures, when those improvements are removed, the new development has to come into conformance with the setbacks. So any of the homes in this neighborhood, if the home were removed, the new structure would have to comply.
All right. Any concluding summaries or arguments from the applicant?
Yeah, so the three examples that I mentioned, they don't meet the side setbacks. The picture showed is the side where they encroach. So they don't meet the code. I guess I'm not sure why.
Accessory structures have different setbacks. This was for the primary structures.
Yeah, I understand that. The side setback for a detached garage behind the home is three feet, and these do not meet that. So I understand what he's trying to do, and he's arguing for a position that he's told to do, but there's no need to be misleading. They don't meet the side setbacks, and we're not encroaching as much as they do, right? We're just trying to build something reasonable.
All right. Is that it, sir?
Yes.
All right. You can have a seat. All right. Now we'll move on to Board discussion of the issues and evidence and a decision. Any discussion from the Board?
Well, I feel like I have to say something since I voted to not approve the last one. Or to, but in this situation, it's a, I don't, I don't see a reason to approve it. It doesn't comply with, it doesn't meet any of the standards. This is a blank slate. He's working with a completely blank slate. He knows where he lives. He knows the neighborhood he's in. He knows what the zoning standards are before he designs his home. I feel that maybe he doesn't feel a detached garage or a two-car garage is, maybe he feels that's unreasonable to not have those. But many people have those, and many people build with those standards still today. So I just feel like, since this is a blank slate lot, that I have a really, I just, I think it's different. That's my opinion.
I would just echo those comments. This is a completely different situation than the last appeal that we heard. The building was torn, the previous structure was torn down. It's a blank lot, and applicant is choosing to build on the lot that's here.
I don't, yeah. I mean, there's other things too, but that's irrelevant, that are irrelevant.
And the only other thing I want to point out, which staff has already pointed out, there are other, plenty of other houses in this area. They're older houses, and many of these houses were built before the current city code. So if they don't meet that, it's because that they were built before the city codes. And, but anything that's built after has to meet city code.
When I also think in situations like these, especially if you want to talk accessory structures and sometimes the side yard setbacks, without an actual survey, some of it you don't know in an older neighborhood. So it's difficult to, just off of an aerial and a measure-on beacon, to say something does or doesn't comply, whether it's staff that says that or an applicant, I just, so. does or doesn't comply, whether it's staff that says that or an applicant, it just, so.
Any other board discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion, or were you going to? You go. Oh, you were starting, you go.
No, I wasn't.
Oh, I thought, okay. I'll make a motion for alternative one to deny the request for the variance to reduce the north side setback and the south side setback.
All right, Cruz has made a motion to approve alternative one. Is there a second?
Second.
That Keeler has seconded. Then we'll move to a roll call vote. Aye.
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 All right, so the motion, alternative number one is carried for denial of the request for a variance. Any person desiring to appeal this decision to a court of record may do so within 30 days after the filing of this decision. And then we'll move on to item number four, public hearing on a request for an exception for a long driveway paving to reduce the amount of paved driveway required at 2617 Oakwood Road, parcel number 09-16-325-190.
Good evening. Before I get into the property and the standards, just to note that this is a new type of exception that was adopted into our code in August of this year, so it's the first time this type of request is coming before the board. With that exception, it's an exception for when you have a driveway over 300 feet in length from the front property line to your dwelling, you don't have to pave the full length. You pave up to 50 feet to prevent nuisances, ensure there's a paved area closest to the road. And then if you meet exception standards for having a unique character to your lot, such as it being rurally situated, wooded, then you can receive this exception from the zoning board of adjustment. And we do have criteria for the lot to be uniquely situated to ensure that there isn't a nuisance factor being created. There's no, you know, nearby neighbors who might be disturbed by noise from gravel or dust, those kinds of things. So with that said, I have the, the property up on the screen. Your packet had an old aerial imagery. We actually have new aerial imagery, so you can see where the house is located on this lot that's highlighted. It is actually 950 feet back from the road, from Oakwood Road. So it far exceeds our 300-foot standard. They are willing to pave the first 50 feet and receive a driveway permit for it. They, they will be proposing gravel for the remainder of the driveway, which has been reviewed and approved by the municipal engineer, if it's at a depth of four feet. As you can see, this lot is uniquely situated, it's on the far western, I'm sorry, four inches. Thanks, ma'am.
Okay.
Good call. It's on the western extent of the city limits, just, you know, it looks like 300 feet to, to the west there is rural and incorporated Story County. It's 12 acres, which is a unique lot size for the city and, and the neighbors, the neighboring houses are, have, you know, 200 feet or more away from this area. So we have found that the standards are met and we are recommending approval with the conditions that the remaining unpaved length after the first 50 feet is paved, has gravel up to four inches and they receive a driveway permit. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the board of staff? Oh, not at this time, sir, not at this time. All right, so no questions for staff? All right, and then does the applicant wish to be heard at this time? All right, sir, can you raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, then can you state your name and your address?
I'm Alex Wickencamp. I live at the address 2617 Oakwood Road. We're the ones obviously applying for the driveway. I don't have any necessarily prepared statements. I did want to bring up, and this may be more along the driveway permitting, but my plan for the flares at the road had exceeded what the permit, I guess, what the city code offers. I'm fine with narrowing that back down. I had just gone by the neighbors' driveways and measured out theirs. My presumption is those lots were maybe created with their driveways before they were incorporated or something along those lines, I'm not sure. So that criteria, I'm perfectly happy to narrow that down and follow that if it simplifies
All right. Anything else, sir?
That's it.
Any questions from the board for the applicant? All right, no questions? All right, then, sir, you can be seated for now. All right, at this time, if there are any members of the audience who wish to speak in support or opposition of the appeal, come forward. Yes. Do you, do you want to speak?
I don't want to speak in support.
Okay, you want to speak in opposition?
Yes.
Okay, you can come forward, ma'am. Have you filled out one of those cards?
I did indeed, it's right up there.
And she's got that? Okay, then can you raise your, your right hand?
Yeah, sure.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
All right, can you state your name?
Yes.
And where you live?
Yes, my name is Jane Love. I live at 2503 Timberland Road. My husband and I own that property and the one right adjacent to it, which is 2501. And we are, that property is adjacent to the property where the road is being built. So we received this notice that we might be interested and wanted to come. So I thank you for the opportunity to address this. I think the choice of a surface material for a driveway affects not just the owners, but also the surrounding neighborhood, has an impact on the residents, the plants, the animals, and the groundwater. And Ames prohibits the use of gravels on most driveways for very good reasons, I think. And my basic assumption is that in Ames, we care about the environment, we all share concern for the quality of the air we breathe and the water we drink, and we care about our neighbors. The request for this road to be gravelled is not for a property that's located like deep back in a forest. This does have an area, forest area all around behind it, and it was in the agricultural, in the forest reserve until fairly recently, and this is the first property, I believe, to be built back into that area. There are many residences adjacent to this property, including, as I mentioned, the ones on Timberland where I live, but also many others. If you don't know the terrain, this area is part of a watershed. Runoff from our properties accumulates in small streams. These little streams come right down out of our yards and they intersect and eventually feed into Worley Creek. And erosion control, water quality, and preservation of the natural habitats, I think is something we should be interested in. As I mentioned, there's a deeply wooded area behind this very large property that's owned by the people asking for the variance, and it, it contains, it has a lot of steep-sided ravines, it contains many species of native trees and woodland plants, and it's a good habitat for a lot of birds and animals. Now, now I'll address the questions I have about, about dust, basically. There are questions about erosion that I think are relevant. I don't know about the building of roads. This road is up on the high side of a bluff that was reshaped, and as far as I can see, I've only been able to look up the road from the, from the highway on Oakland Street, but it's, it's had concrete put along the side of it. And I think, I hope all the, all the concerns for erosion control have been taken care of, but I'm not going to address that. I think in, in national parks, for example, roads wouldn't be built up on the top as this one was. At least, this is my observations. I looked into an EPA publication that was titled "Environmentally Sensitive Maintenance for Dirt and Gravel Roads." It deals with the impact of gravel roads on the environment and proposes the best remedies for minimizing this impact. And before you say this is not a road, it's a driveway, I'll tell you that this publication includes a section on driveways. It also has an interesting estimate, which may have come from the Forest Service, that one ton of aggregate per mile is lost each year for each vehicle that passes over a road daily. Now, that's some estimate that has been made, and of course, there's no way to know the exact extent of gravel degradation that will occur on this long driveway. And when gravel degrades, of course, you have dust. There are other problems, too. Anyone that's ever lived on a gravel road in a rural area, as I have, knows about the problems of gravel roads. Subsidence, you know, spreading out, very bad conditions, sometimes in the, in the winter when ice or snow makes them virtually impossible. I think, I assume someone is giving concern to the thought that city vehicles might be required to go up this road at some time and find the conditions difficult, unless they're properly maintained. But there'll be dust. We don't know how much or exactly how far it will spread, but dust particles from gravel, particularly the really small ones, what's called PM 2.5, that means they're 2.5 millimeters or under, can travel significant distances. So the dust is not just going to land on the property that is right next to the road. It'll be there next to the road, but it will travel farther. And some of this dust is going to land on vegetation, and when that happens, it impacts the health of the plants. They get coated with, with gravel dust, their pores get clogged up by the big pieces and the smaller pieces really have an impact on plant respiration and health. And gravel, gravel dust that also, gravel dust also is going to settle down to the soil and that affects the quality of the soil because gravel dust has minerals in it that change the character of the soil. So I think the gravel dust is going to also get washed off into the waterways and affect the water that's flowing out of this area, and it also will affect groundwater quality. And dust will obviously affect animals and birds as well as compromising the habitat quality for them. And of course, the impact on dust, on, of dust on human health is really the paramount concern. And I found a review of the scientific literature on this subject published in a journal called Epidemiological Health. This was a 2008 study. The authors, who surveyed all the literature that was available to them, that they concluded met high scientific standards for inclusion, did concern that components of road dust are a concern for people, especially for people with respiratory and health conditions. Being scientists, they also recommended more study of the effect of road dust particles, especially those tiny ones, those PM 2.5 particles, both in rural and urban situations. You can imagine that in, on rural roads with lots of traffic, heavy vehicles, this dust is a real problem, as I said. I've, I've experienced it. And probably had obstructive pulmonary disease as a result, partially of inhaling all of those dust particles. That's my own opinion. Now, there's a lot of easily accessed literature on the systems that can be used to mitigate the effect of dust from gravel roads. You can find a lot of those. I could give you some good sources, including one from the EPA. Some of these methods that are suggested are not really very effective. Some of them are more effective, some are less costly, some are more costly. But of course, if you made, if, if the city makes the, the decision to follow their guidelines and not use gravel, that would not, there would be no need to implement any of these costly and only partially successful methods. Failing that action, I hope the city will require that an efficacious system of dust regulation, dust mitigation, will be required to be applied to the gravel and maintained on the driveway in question. I think that's a reasonable expectation as a resident of Ames who lives in a neighborhood and our neighborhoods, in our neighborhoods, we care about our neighbors and, and don't want to impact their health or the quality of the environment around them. So I thank you for allowing me to present my concerns and if you have questions, I would try to answer them.
All right, does the board have any questions?
I just have one question. In your research, when it talks about the amount of dust and particle size and drift, does it talk ever about, like, how many trips per day?
The what?
How many trips per day? Like, obviously, a gravel road has much more traffic than a driveway that might have one or two trips.
Well, obviously, all those things affect it. You know, it would be affected by the size of the vehicles and the weight of the vehicles and the speed at which they were driving. But this, this estimate that I gave you earlier was for-
I believe it said one trip per day.
It is, I would say.
That one ton of aggregate, one ton of aggregate, they call this the 1-1-1-1 rule. One ton of aggregate, that's your gravel, per mile would be lost each year for each vehicle, for one vehicle passing over a road daily. I don't know, I, I can't really, I'm not a, I'm not an engineer, you know? I'm a food scientist. So this is all stuff that I have read and tried to study up on, but, you know, I, I can't really back up the technical details. And I mean, there are studies being done about trying to estimate how much road dust would be created and how far it would travel, that's another question. And I looked at one of those, but it was, it was done by, I don't know, physicists or environmental, whatever, and they were trying to get an algorithm and a plan together so you could put in information and you'd be able to answer those questions. But that was just what they were trying to do. They didn't say, you know, that they've tested this out and so they can really, really answer it. So I think some of those questions you just can't answer, except that we know that the PM 2.5 particles, the very small ones, will, will travel. And dust can stay in the area, so I read in this EPA report, for several days. And it's not just a problem that, you know, goes away instantly. It does have all of these effects. So I think that City of Ames has been wise not to allow gravel on roads inside the, inside the city limits. And I, I realize that if you have a very long road, it might be costly to apply the kind of surfaces that all the rest of us are required to have. But I would think that would be something that you'd think about at the time you built the, built the plan for the property. I think, you know, we need to, as, as a person concerned about the environment, I think we need to look at what, what we're going to need to do in an environmentally conscious way before we act, before we allow more, more of this land to be developed. Also, you know, we've heard a lot about precedence. I think, you know, this, this property is creating, is creating a new precedent for this whole area behind there, which is really quite unique for Ames in terms of the animal life, the butterflies, the, you know, the, the trees, the native, beautiful native wildflowers, pollinators. I don't know- I don't know what the fate of this, the rest of this will be, but if it's going to be developed, it's very difficult to develop back in there because it is very hilly and ravines. And I once wandered by accident off of our property over into some of this other area, realized I didn't really know where I was, and had to figure out a way to get out, which I just said, I gotta start keeping, move south, I can see the sun. And, and if there's going to be development in there, it needs to be done very carefully not to degrade something that, at least in my opinion, is a very important ecological system within the city of Ames, ecological area within the city of Ames.
All right. Any other questions?
I have a comment and kind of question as well, all embedded. So in my day job, I'm an environmental scientist, and I actually happen to live in this neighborhood or close by. One of the other factors that affects dust is the speed at which the vehicle traveling, just the number. And you can imagine a driveway, vehicles are going pretty slow. The other thing I want to add is that there is a gravel road, so S State Avenue ends right there, becomes gravel, as you know, since you live in the area as well. So there's already a large gravel road that there's cars traveling quite fast on, and I know because I go running over in that area.
And it's, the dust over there is terrible. It's terrible for the environment, it's terrible for the people, you know, it's more of an agricultural area, but, you know, so it's not quite the same situation. But the fact that it's there now doesn't necessarily mean that we want to add more.
Well, I guess my point, do you happen to know how many miles of gravel road there are in Iowa?
No, not a lot.
It's 60,000 to 70,000 miles. And, and I think I would be more worried about the gravel road there than a gravel driveway.
If, if I had a chance to do anything about the gravel road there or address anything, I would, but that's not something that we can change. That's, that's, that's just a thing that's there, and it's not going to be able to, you know, I think it should probably have remediations on the gravel, et cetera. But I think people have to be concerned. I know, and, and, you know, one time, my husband and I looked at a property on a beautiful lake down in south central Iowa, but the roads were gravelled, and there'd been very little building there because people didn't want to live on gravel roads. And, and only until they found an effective way to treat the gravel, and you may know, you probably know more about this than I do, there are all these different ways that you can try to remediate the dust. Till they found an effective way to do that, people just didn't want to, to live there. So I'm, I'm just saying, let's not set a precedent for more gravel roads back in the woods behind this as it gets further developed, if it gets further developed.
Gravel driveway.
Pardon? Gravel driveway.
Gravel driveway.
Well, driveway road, a very long driveway almost becomes a road. You know, there are sometimes roads that are shorter than that driveway we're talking about, right? So the difference between a gravel road and a gravel driveway, I don't know where. Where does a gravel driveway get long enough to be considered a short road?
It's also the width of the road and different publicly set standards on the amount of gravel.
I don't know anything about the width of that road that's, that's being gravelled back in there. I can only see it, like I said, as I go past on Oakwood Road. So I don't know, there are many questions I don't, I couldn't answer. I just have a general concern that having gravelled roads inside the city limit in Ames is not a good thing to do.
All right. Well, thank you for your testimony, ma'am.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
All right. Any other members of the audience who want to speak in support of or opposition?
I don't have prepared texts.
All right. And then, sir, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
And then can you state your name and where you live?
My name is Mark Howard Love, and I live at 2503 Timberland Road, and we also own the property behind 2501. That's the tax description. I only raised, I only wanted to raise one point about this. I'm a city boy, but I learned the precarious nature of driving on gravel roads when I married an Iowa farm girl, and we went to the farm in the wintertime, and it can be life-threatening, let me tell you, if you've never done it. Also, I was a little disappointed that the city didn't provide a picture of this road that they're going to build. They filled in one or two significantly deep gullies with concrete blocks and then considerable dirt fill. And I presume it's stable, but it appears to be about a car wide, maybe a little bit bigger than that. And the question I have for you is, what's going to happen in the wintertime if an emergency vehicle needs to get to that property over the gravel road when it's perched on top of this rather high road bed? Because it could be serious consequences for the owners. Thank you.
All right. Any questions from the board or the member of the public? No? Okay. Any other members of the public who wish to speak? All right, seeing none. Any closing remarks by city staff? No. Nope. All right. Any closing remarks from the applicant?
So I wasn't aware there was as much opposition to this as there seems to be. So I kind of draw it down some notes, and hopefully I can kind of appease some of the concern that some of the cons were for, first that she brought up was storm...
Yeah, just speak into the microphone.
Yeah. So the stormwater runoff, we've had it surveyed, and the DNR has evaluated it and approved a stormwater runoff plan for the whole property, which we have enacted to eliminate any stormwater runoff for the property as well. The, the, no development, she brought that up as well. I think the concern there may have been for increased traffic load as though it was going to be developed back further into the woods, and that's actually not allowed. Technically, the property still is in forest reserve. We have one acre cut out of forest reserve so that we could be, so that we're taxed on it for the property itself. But the whole 12-acre property is zoned low-density residential. It only allows essentially the one house to be built on it, and I highly doubt that that would ever be rezoned for the purpose of difficulty to get back there, for one. The, the dust concern, I think that that was already brought up. It is a driveway. It's not by any means a straight driveway. You cannot drive quickly on it. We curve around trees and other kind of topography of the land as it kind of goes back there. So there's very few cars. We only have three cars for the whole family right now. Obviously, we're not racing down the driveway at speeds that create any dust. It's objective to me because I drive on the road regularly, but I've not seen any evidence of accumulation of dust or anything like that on the plants, even right up next to the driveway. And our direct neighbors to the west there, which are technically outside the city limits, I've not heard any specific complaints about gravel dust or anything along, along those lines. Another one that was brought up was the work that we did to create the driveway in the first place. There's a substantial amount of dirt to build the approach off of the road. That was a lot of dirt. There's no wall particularly there. The wall that he's referring to, you can see, is kind of a linear north-south line about halfway down the driveway. And that is a gully that was filled in. That is about 60 feet off of the property line, between the property line and that wall that was engineered with engineers here in town. It was approved by the city to build that wall, and it's, and so that wall is structurally sound, it is reinforced. It's got everything that you would need for a retaining wall of that size, and it's designed and placed in such a way that should that wall ever collapse, the fallout from the dirt, if you will, backfill from there would most likely, you can't say 100%, would not even reach the driveway if that was the case. So it's further than the width of the driveway away from the driveway before you even get to the wall itself. And I think that it's on all the stuff that they had brought up, unless I'm forgetting something in particular. So that's kind of my response to those concerns.
All right.
Yeah, how wide is the driveway?
So the driveway, it's variable now because the gravel hasn't been finalized, but the plan is for it to be 15 foot wide. And I will say, to alleviate all the concerns with the dust and the gravel, ultimately, our plan is to eventually pave the whole driveway. But right now, with how much dirt work and, and backfill and things that have been there over the couple of years that it's taken to build the property, even in that period of time, I've seen several undulations in the driveway that I want to have settle as long as we can before we decide to pave, which is why I pursued working on this exception for the long driveway in the first place so that I could be within approved guidelines per the city in order to leave it gravel while it kind of settles for, you know, probably years before we go ahead and do a final top grade and pave the rest of the driveway.
Has the driveway been examined about, like, fire trucks getting there?
It has been. We, before we even broke ground, we had talked very directly with the city or the fire inspector, because there's a lot of criteria for emergency vehicles and fire trucks and how much of a grade you can have and how wide your curves and things can be. And that was all sent through them and approved for this access road, so that's all been signed off.
Thank you.
Not, not at this time, ma'am. We're not going to go out of order, and plus, we're kind of going long. Okay, well, we're out, we're out of order at this point. So, sir, do you have anything else to say?
That's all.
Okay, you can have a seat. And then we're going to move on to board discussion and possible vote. Any discussion by the board?
I grew up on gravel, gravel roads, and I know the, the dust is irritating, but I also had a gravel driveway, and maybe it was the poor quality of my parents' driveway, but we never drove very fast on it. He's also stated his intention to pave the entire driveway, and the first 50 feet are paved, so I don't see this, and it doesn't seem possible that there would be more houses built with driveways this, like, exceeding 50 feet, so, which is already kind of long. So I don't see this as setting a precedent, so I would, sorry, so I would support alternative two when we're ready to do so. Nope, I think I got the wrong one. Alternative one, excuse me. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? And if not, entertain a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to agree with what you were saying, Caleb, that like, yeah, I don't see this becoming a further problem or precedent. And as I mentioned, there's a large gravel road with many vehicles going much more fast on there, and I think it's intent of people who own a gravel road to take good care of it and make sure it doesn't blow away. I think most homeowners would do that.
I second the motion is, that was a motion, right?
No, I didn't say motion. But I will, I will move to accept alternative one.
All right. White House has moved to approve alternative number one. Is there a second?
So second.
Keeler is second in the motion, so we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Aye.
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 All right. So the board has approved alternative number one, granting the request. Any person desiring to appeal this decision to a quarter record may do so within 30 days after the filing of this decision. And then we'll move on to the last item on our agenda, which is appeal of decision of zoning enforcement officer regarding the structure at 607 and 609 Sixth Street being a pre-existing two-family dwelling in continuous use, parcel number 09-02-306-200. So I'll turn it over to staff.
Okay. So this appeal is specific to, there's a phrase in the definition of what a pre-existing two-family dwelling is, and that phrase is continuous use. So this appeal is about specifically what constitutes a continuous use. This property is zoned residential medium density, and in that zoning district, we only allow two-family dwellings as either pre-existing or new construction. And that's because of a, a recent amendment to our code where we adopted standards to allow duplexes in every zone if they meet certain design standards to be compatible with neighborhoods. And so everything that was existing became pre-existing at that point that didn't meet design standards. Specifically, this two-family dwelling was converted in the late 70s. It was rented and had a valid letter of compliance until 2018, when the second unit, when the letter of compliance was not renewed and the second unit became vacant. The, the first main unit has been occupied up until recently, but that second unit has been vacant for a number of years, and, and over a year since the dwelling became pre-existing with our code change. The appellant asserts that they haven't changed the structure at all. Nothing's been converted or modified to make an internal connection that would create this, make this go back to being a single-family dwelling. But staff's decision is that continuous use is literal in that it means actual use and occupancy or a valid letter of compliance that will allow you to immediately rent that second unit. And that's based on our definition, which I have up here. So it references pre-existing means legally established use that was permitted at the time of 2000 and remains in continuous use since that time. So it doesn't say remains in the same condition, it doesn't say, say remains intended to be used, it says actual use. And so this definition was adopted in 2017 because we had questions about how to interpret what a pre-existing dwelling was. And so in that staff report, we actually go into more of, you know, what does use mean? And so I'll scroll down to an excerpt of that staff report. But basically, discontinuance would mean occupancy of the structure as a single dwelling unit or expiration of the letter of compliance or physical alteration to the structure. So that means when you, those are the factors that would mean you've stopped using it. You no longer are occupying a unit, or you've lost your letter of compliance, or you've made a modification. So, so I think in summary, staff's determination is that we're, it's more than maintaining physically separate units to have a continuous use, you have to have actual occupancy. So with that, we are recommending that you deny the appeal. And I will just note that the appeal, if, if it is denied, it means the structure is allowed to be used as a single-family dwelling. And, and that doesn't mean that one of the units can't be used, it just limits the occupancy of the structure as a whole. So instead of having two units where you can have three occupants each, you're just limited to three occupants in total. It wouldn't require modifications to the structure or, or just allow the use of one of the units. It's, it's just a question of the number of occupants under rental or, or as one family under zoning. Any questions?
So just to clarify the timeline, it was converted to a two-family dwelling in the 70s, sometime within the last 20 years, the second unit became vacant and it stayed vacant until, or up until now?
Yes. So it became vacant in, in 2018.
Okay.
And then the, the other unit became vacant more recently.
Right. And so because your interpretation is that because the second unit became vacant and stayed vacant for a year, it's reverting to a single-family residence?
Yes.
Got it.
If they would have approached this before April 3rd, 2025, would it have stayed as... would it have stayed as a two-unit?
So what they would have had to have done prior to that date is get a valid letter of compliance. So it probably would have required upgrades to bring this into conformance with rental code. But if those upgrades were done prior to that date, yes, it could have still been a two-family.
Good. And that's not an option anymore?
No, because the discontinuance period that year has passed, unfortunately. And I'll just give an example because it's kind of hard to think about what the intent of the code is here when you're looking at a residential use versus, you know, another type of residential use. This is modeled after how we treat other types of non-conforming uses. So think about a commercial use in the middle of a neighborhood. You know, if that commercial use ceased for a year, we wouldn't allow another commercial use to be reestablished in that space. So it's modeled after that same, same concept.
Any other questions for staff? No. All right. And then if the applicant is present, the applicant can present any testimony or evidence.
I filled out a yellow.
Okay. And then can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do, yes.
And then can you state your name and where you live?
Sure. I am Kristin Tibbin, and I live at 2085 Michael Lane. And I'm here to represent my client. I work for Friedrich Iowa Realty and was asked to list this property. I'm working with the daughter. The dad is no longer able to make decisions on his own. He lived in this property on the main level the entire time, converted it for extra income in the '70s, I believe, or '80s. And then as his health was declining, he did not reapply for the LOC. So fast forward, now we're needing to sell it. And I don't know if you, do you have that picture of the entrance?
Yes.
Thank you. So there literally are two ways to enter to this home. You go to the left and you go upstairs to the apartment. And then you go right, and that's where the owner lived until April, when they had to get long-term care for him in a nursing home due to dementia, which I'm guessing probably, I mean, he's also elderly, but I'm guessing that had some play in why that expired. So proper channels, we felt like, I mean, for me, due diligence is, I need to check with the city to find out what needs to be done to pursue reinstating this. So did that. It took several weeks for us to get an answer back, which was, well, we had a pre-sell inspection because I felt like we needed to be careful of the buyer also, because what their intention for buying it was could very easily be they thought that they could, you know, use it as a rental. Got a no answer on that. Did get the pre-inspection list, which, in my opinion, didn't look extensive. It looked like something that could be managed by a future buyer. Got a no from the city on that, so we decided to pursue an appeal. That's kind of where it's at. Have had a lot of inquiries about this home, however, because of the fact that it can't be used any other way. Because even if you wanted to use it as a single-family residence, there's no way to get upstairs to have your family up there. So, and I don't know if you're familiar, but this home is just right across the street. Yeah. And so that's kind of where it's at. We do have an offer on the home that we've accepted. However, I think they would like the opportunity to be able to use this for rental purposes, too. So I don't know, but that's kind of my span of time.
All right. Any questions of the board for the applicant? Okay. Questions? All right. Thank you, ma'am.
You bet. Thank you, guys. I know it's a late one. You worked all day, so thank you.
All right. Are there any members of the audience who wish to speak in support of or opposition to the appeal?
There's no one here.
And there's no one here, so I just want to make sure that everyone who is not seeing the audience knows that. All right. So I'll give the city staff opportunity to make some brief summary concluding remarks.
Yeah, I'll just note that I understand the circumstances and the timing. It is unfortunate, but we are looking at how we interpret this code citywide and setting a precedent for, you know, several of these pre-existing two-family dwellings that we've been dealing with that are now vacant. And then the timeframe and what constitutes, you know, when that time starts before they use that status. So I just did want to remind the board that this is, you know, kind of a broader precedent that would be set with the decision tonight.
All right. And then does the applicant wish to make any concluding remarks? No? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. All right. And then we'll move on to board discussion and possible vote.
I mean, for me, this comes down to whether or not disuse is considered a change in use, I guess. I guess it is, but it's not, like, I would interpret this as like if you converted the upstairs to an office and you were renting it out for a commercial office space or something like that, then that would very clearly constitute a change in use. But I think the spirit of the code being focused on residential, specifically two-unit dwellings or being allowed to convert a single-unit dwelling to a two-unit dwelling, rather than converting a single-unit dwelling to a one-unit residential, one-unit office space. I would agree, in that sense, I would agree with the city's interpretation that we're looking at this kind of purely on a residential level. And the spirit of the code is to reflect changes between single-family use and two-family use.
So you're arguing, just so I understand what you're saying, you're arguing, or you're stating, sorry, you're stating that you don't really see it as a change in use because it's residential to residential, just types of residential? Is that what you're?
Initially, the more I kind of understood what the nature of the ordinance at question is, this, the ordinance doesn't allow for a change in use from residential to commercial. So in that sense, when they're referring to a discontinued use, it would be a discontinued use of the property as a two-family dwelling, rather than the discontinued use of the property for a residential use. So, yeah.
I see what you're saying. Well, and, yeah, the definition's pretty clear about continuous use as well. So it wasn't continually used as that two-family. So I think it's kind of hard to
Right.
like, find a way around it or justify the use of the second unit as, you know, it's just no longer in compliance anymore.
Well, like, there are, I think, as she said, there's physical characteristics of the structure that limit its use in practice as it could present a practical difficulty to go outside, to have to go upstairs. But that I don't think is at question because the, for the last seven years, the second story hasn't been used at all. So the property itself hasn't been used as a two-family dwelling for seven years.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
Maybe a clarification from you all. I can, and this might be for staff, too. So it said options. I think that's the same thing as alternatives. It said there were a 1A and a 1B later in the page, but only 1A has shown up in the alternatives. So staff comments on, it's very last page.
Oh, that's the 2017 staff report.
Ah, okay.
For the actual text amendment that adopted the definition. Yes, staffs, the alternatives before you tonight are on page five.
Okay.
Oh.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yep, yep. So five and six.
I think the, or the unfortunate thing is the timing of this, but it's been unused for too long. So I would move, are we to that point?
I think so.
Oh, I missed the page. Here it is. I would move to agree with the director's decision, or the director's decision will stand as is, and the ZBA denies the appeal.
All right. Keeler's made a motion regarding alternative number three. Any, any motion for a second?
I'll second.
All right. McDaniel has seconded the motion, and we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Aye.
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 All right. So the motion approving alternative number three, the director's decision will stand as is with ZBA denial of the appeal. That motion carries. Any person desiring to appeal this decision to a court of record may do so within 30 days after the filing of this decision. And with no other items on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. So White House has moved to adjourn. Any second?
Second.
Keeler's second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any post? There are none, so meeting is adjourned.